We're calling this meeting of the Vader City Council to order. It's now six, four.
How old time?
Six, six, four minutes after six. On October 21st, 24th, 2019. We'll need a roll call now from the city clerk.
Randy Hall? Jason Daley?
Here.
Joe Schei?
Here.
Mike Parsons? Mike Parsons?
Here.
Lois Wilson?
Here.
Lois, you have a mark.
Okay, why don't we stand and say the pledge of allegiance for the ones that didn't join us the last time.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic which stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Before we begin the meeting, I'd like to remind everyone that this is a business meeting for the city council. The public will have the opportunity to speak for three minutes each at that point in time. Anyone who speaks out of turn during the meeting will be asked to hold their comments until the public comment portion of the meeting, and if that person speaks out of turn a second time, they'll be asked to leave the meeting and will be escorted out. Public comment will be heard at the end of the meeting. The first order of business is to swear in a newly appointed city council, Samantha Lovelady.
So what you can have here, repeat it.
Okay.
I got mine. You said anything?
Okay. Samantha Lovelady, do you solemnly swear that I will-
Raise your right hand.
Swear that you will support the Constitution?
Lois, just read a portion and have her repeat it to you.
Okay.
Aye, Samantha Lovelady.
Do you solemnly swear?
Do you solemnly swear?
That I will support-
Start over, start over, start at the beginning. Aye, Samantha Lovelady.
Do you solemnly swear?
No. Aye, Samantha Lovelady.
Do you solemnly swear?
Do you solemnly swear?
That I will support the Constitution?
That I will support the Constitution.
And the laws of the state of Washington?
And the laws of the state of Washington.
And the Constitution?
And the Constitution.
And laws of the United States of America.
And laws of the United States of America.
And I will faithfully and impartially perform-
And I will faithfully and impartially perform-
And discharge the duties of the city council.
And discharge the duties of the city council.
Of the city of Vader, Washington.
Of the city of Vader, Washington.
According to the law.
According to the law.
In the best of my ability.
And the best of my ability.
So help me God.
So help me God.
This is the 24th October 19.
Hold on, hold on, you gotta sign. You gotta sign here, Samantha. And then Lois signs below.
Who would've thought of-
And then you also have to sign this one. You sign down there, down right there, yeah. Awesome. And then Lois, you gotta sign this one too, at the very bottom, at the bottom of the signature. And then I need all three of you council members to sign this off and pass it to you. Awesome. You did it. Now you can invite her to be seated.
Yes.
Sign and pass it down.
Does the council have any reports? Do we have a motion to approve the agenda?
I'll make a motion that we approve the city council agenda for 12/24/2019. Agreed?
For 10/24? Did I write?
10/24/2019, sorry.
Do we have a second?
I'll second that.
The motion's been seconded by Samantha. Is there any council discussion? All those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Lois, you gotta wait so they can do it, so now you can ask any opposed.
Is any opposed? No, the motion's passed. Do we have a motion to approve the minutes?
I'll make a motion to approve the city council meeting minutes from 10/10/2019.
Do we have a second?
I'll second.
The motion's been seconded by Randy Hall. All those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And the motion has passed. Vouchers. Do we have a motion to approve the vouchers?
I'll make a motion to approve the vouchers for the first half of October 2019 in a total of $37,796.16.
Use that orange sheet to read the other ones.
In the end of October, in a total of $18,299.86, bringing October's 2019 total to $56,096.2.
Okay, the motion's, we have a second on that?
The motion's been submitted.
Okay, is there any discussion?
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Is there any discussion after the second? All those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
All those-
Wait, 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 give them a chance to say aye. So who all said aye, couldn't tell? One, two, you all said aye, okay.
Can't raise his hand.
Okay. Special reports. The park ward person did not make it. They called and said they might not get here in time, so they've asked if they could please make their report at the next meeting, since they're not here. And the planning committee did not have a meeting that got postponed, so they don't have a report either. So we can move on to business.
Okay, city business. The first item of business for the council is to hold a public hearing on the 2020 budget revenues and property tax levy. Do we have a motion to open the public hearing?
I'll make a motion to open the public hearing.
Okay, and the motion to open the public hearing has been submitted by you.
Jill.
And is there any discussion on that?
We need a second.
I'll second it.
All those in favor of the motion?
Hold on, so we got seconded by Samantha, now we need to have council discussion.
This is where I was.
Do we have to set a timeframe?
Exactly. So you can either set a timeframe on how many minutes each person gets, or you can say we want the meeting to go no longer than whatever.
As tradition, it usually takes us longer to decide how long to have the public hearing than the public hearing actually lasts, so.
If I can make a comment, there's no one signed up to speak at the public hearing on the property tax. Was there anyone here that wanted to that didn't know they needed to sign up?
Do we need to ask questions, or do we have to-
It's not a question and answer, it is public comment, where you only make your personal comment to council. Is there anyone who wanted to sign up for public comment? So there's zero signed up. So how long do you want the meeting, the public hearing, to last?
How about until no more public would like to speak?
Okay.
Indefinite.
So we need to finish this motion then. So now that we've clarified that the public hearing will be as long as people want to talk. Okay?
Okay, those in favor of that motion, say aye.
Aye.
How many passed, two, three?
Everybody said aye.
And so I call this public hearing to order, I guess, at 6:15.
Get your gavel.
I better.
There you go. Okay.
Right, Judy, you got the floor.
Is it open?
Oh, you are going to comment? Oh, okay, I understand how we're gonna do this. Okay, so we have one person that wants to-
I should like to comment, if that's okay.
Okay.
My question is first-
You're supposed to come up.
No, I'm getting dressed to come up.
That's the new look, isn't it?
This is the look. Judy Costello, 709 A Street, Vader. Is this the same tax levy that we accrue money for a year, like the one that we did before, where we saved the money to use it for projects? Remember last year, it was like 1%? This is it, Joe?
Yeah, it's the property tax levy discussion.
Right, okay.
So that hasn't been decided yet?
Right.
So they want to hear your comment on whether you think we should bank the capacity, or whether we should increase it, or whether we should go down?
What did we do with our last years? Didn't we bank it to save it for a chipper or something?
I don't know if we- Did we earmark it? I thought we increased it, the 1%.
Yeah, this like half a percent, yeah, something like that. And we were gonna use it for something, I think Leona had it all guarded, or something like that, she was watching it, so I was just curious. Do we have any idea what we would use the funds for if we decided to do it? No idea. Will this be coming up at another time, that a decision of what we would use it for? Okay, this is like three questions here in a row.
I know, this is not supposed to be in questions. This is supposed to be only comments. Council's not required to answer any questions. It's just supposed to hear your opinion about, if you have questions, that would've been appropriate during the workshop or after. This is where you comment your opinions, so council knows what the public thinks.
This is the part where you say, I don't want my property taxes raised.
Well, I don't want my property taxes raised, but I thought that we used the funds in a good way in the past for the 1% or the half a percent we raised it. So my opinion on that would be that if we do decide to do that and bank the money, I'd like it used on something that the community could get some use out of it. Whether it be a citywide cleanup, or something, something useful to everybody. Thank you so very much for hearing my comment.
Now I do, I can't remember what we did last year.
I know. I think we increased it to 1%. We did 1%, but I'm almost positive Leona, and I wanted it.
Yeah.
So I should like to know if we can do that at some point.
That's the only person signed up, Lois, so you can move forward on your script.
Okay.
We are at the here comments, what's next?
Is there anyone else who wants to make the comment, who hasn't had the opportunity to speak? Do we have?
I don't see anyone raising their hand, Lois.
Okay, do we have a motion to close the public hearing?
I'll make a motion that we close the public hearing at 6:18.
The motion to close the public hearing has been submitted by Jason at 6:18. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
The motion has been seconded by Randy, is there any council discussion? All those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any opposed? The motion has passed, and we close this public hearing at 6:25.
6:18.
6:18.
Get your gavel.
The second item of business is for council to receive an update on a personnel contract topic. The city clerk treasurer has not been able to complete the task of preparing an ordinance to allow an employment contract. The public will, the topic will be ready at next council meeting. The third item of business for tonight is for the council to consider Resolution 18-2019, an extension to the building official contract. Do we have a motion on that resolution, 1829?
I move to approve Resolution 18-2019, authorizing the mayor to execute a professional agreement with Townsend and Associates Incorporated for building official services substantially as written.
All those in, we need a second.
No, we have a motion.
We have a motion, we have a motion to approve, that has been submitted by Joe, and we have, do we have a second?
I'll second that.
The motion's been seconded by Samantha, is there any council discussion? All those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion's been passed. The next item of business for the city council to consider, a request by Lions Club-
Did we skip number two?
No, she just, she read a statement.
Oh.
That we don't have the ordinance ready yet, and that we'll have it at the next meeting.
The next item of business is for the city council to consider a request by Lions Club to use the city hall council chambers for their regular meetings twice per month. Do we have a motion on that request?
I need to recuse myself from that vote, because I am a member of Lions Club.
Okay.
So am I.
But you're not voting, so you don't have to worry about that.
The motion's been-
No, so we, no one's made a motion yet, she just refused herself from voting, so.
So, anybody else that wants to make a motion?
Can I ask a question?
Sure.
Then what? Who, if they come, who's responsible for the security of the building?
Well, their meetings are held at 12:30 in the afternoon, so we will be here on Thursday, it's 12:30 on Thursday, so we will be here.
My only concern with that.
Yeah. I did ask the attorney about it, because there was some question about whether it would be gifting of funds to waive the $5 rental fee, and she verified that because they are a charitable nonprofit organization, that it was not gifting of funds, but she did recommend that if we're going to be waiving fees, and because we've done this with other charitable nonprofits, she recommended that we might put something in our policy, or our fee policy, that states that if you are a charitable nonprofit organization through the state of Washington, or whatever, that your fee may be waived, and just kind of putting that in, in the policies. And so if council wants to see that put in our policies, so that it's not such a question every time something like this comes up, that anyways, she just felt like it was wise to put that in our policies, so that we're not going against any of our own policies for fee schedules and for rental fees, so that's just kind of a side point. But she felt if you wanted to do a motion to go ahead and allow that, that she felt that that was well within your authority to do so.
Does anyone want to-
I'll move to, I'll move to allow the Lions Club to hold their regular meetings in the city hall council chambers, as long as it does not pose conflict with regular city business, and to waive their rental fee, as long as they retain their nonprofit status.
No, motion has been submitted.
Submitted, and it needs to be seconded, it's very, wants to second it.
I'll second that.
Okay, and the motion has been seconded by Jill. And all those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Should have some discussion.
Oh, yeah, discussion, any council discussion.
On that note, our fund is still to be used for lunch before it's a little rain. That was clarified, we'll still be having lunch, it's gonna come here for a meeting, and we need your lunch, so.
All those in favor of that?
Aye.
Any opposed?
So that's four ayes?
Yeah.
Okay, and no opposed?
No opposed.
Okay.
The last item of business for council, consider options for credit card processing at city hall. Does the council have any questions for the city clerks?
So I wanted to let you guys know that Tammy, our deputy clerk, has spent an incredible amount of time figuring this out. You would be amazed at how, how many issues there are with signing up for a credit card, and especially relating to the fact that we're a government entity, so we kind of have some additional hoops that happen to be jumped through. But she did an incredible amount of work to put this chart together for you. And basically, in her memo that she, she put in, the point and pay and the forte are pretty much the same, and that they are the two that seem to make the most sense, mainly because they have the most services, they have the lowest percentage rate that would be charged to the card user, it will be charged directly to the card user, and it won't come to the city at all. Some of these other ones require that the city collect it and then remit it back to the company, and that just became too convoluted. Some of them charged us an additional percentage on the percentage that was charged the cardholder, and so anyways, it just got kind of crazy. So I think there are some real options on both the point and pay and the forte. We found out today that they will do online, they will set up an online portal on our website for us as part of their services, there's not an additional charge for that. And the fee, the percentage rate is the same, so people could just go online and pay it directly with, using their credit card or their debit card. And they said that we could do the online portal and not have a terminal here at city hall, if we wanted to do that. And the reason we asked that is because there is a cost for having a terminal here, you do have to pay for it. You'll see the point and pay, it's a $250 for the chip reader, and that, either that, or they have one of those little encrypted swipe readers that you can use, but we would have to buy like a tablet or something to plug it into as well, and then we would have to keep that up, which may end up being about the same as having the chip reader. The chip reader is supposed to be safer than the swipe kind, so I don't know. If we were gonna go with point and pay, I would say, let's just get the chip reader, it's not that much different, and it's less equipment for us to have to keep up on. With the forte, theirs is, their chip reader is $300, but you also have to pay the additional $25 for some special cord that comes with it, so it is a little bit more, but it is also a chip reader, and so that's the safest. But as far as everything else is concerned, they're pretty much the same. There is a lower, it's only 2.5% that's charged. If you do the forte, we would pay more for the, for the equipment, but it would charge the customers a half a percent less. So on the point and pay, we would pay a little bit less for the, for the terminal, but it's a 3% rate.
Which one is the one that puts it on the online?
Both, point and pay and forte will do that, yeah. They'll do that free of charge.
The forte looks like it closes down at 7:00 PM Central Time.
Yeah, that's true, but we're not open that late, so they close down for customer service calls. So if we have a problem and we need to call them, that's, yeah. They're both open, their online portal is open 24 hours.
We'll still be covered then.
Yes, yeah, it's just the customer service line, the support.
It looks cheaper.
The point and pay is cheaper, as far as the, oh, the equipment, but the percentage rate of what the customer would have to pay is cheaper. Yeah, it's half a percent cheaper.
Exactly.
Yeah, that's right.
And how long have they both been around?
That's a good question, I didn't ask them that, I don't think Tammy asked them that either.
I did some research on it, and there's a lot of cities in Washington that use point and pay. In fact, Calix County uses point and pay for their, for all their online transactions.
I'm familiar with that one, I recognize that name.
They're really happy with it.
Yeah, both point and pay and forte are really government oriented, they're very, they work with a lot of governments, and so they understand what our needs are, and are very workable with that, so. As far as city staff is concerned, either one would be fine if you guys wanted to come forward with that. We just, there is a contract involved in both of those, and so we would need council's approval. And I didn't give you a motion, I apologize, but if you want to make a motion that we get a contract put together with one of these companies, then we can present that to you at another meeting to get the contract going. So, if you guys want to do that.
I just wondered, did you guys have an option?
She didn't get called on.
I did.
Oh, I'm sorry, I didn't hear it.
She pointed. Is there a low-cost option to the end user, the public, as well to the city? So maybe doing just the online without having-
It's the same, they said it doesn't cost more or less.
But you wouldn't have the equipment costs?
Wouldn't have the equipment costs, yes.
So if you went with the lower cost, the 2.5% without anything, and just people could do it online, which is a lot.
We just did it online, so that means anyone who came in here would not be able to use their card here in city hall. They could use it at home.
Can they use the card in city hall now?
No. But if there's anybody who wants to use a card, but doesn't have a computer or the ability, which we do have several people who don't really have computer access, they would not, I don't know how, they'd have to get a friend, I guess, to help them pay online if they wanted to use a card.
Yeah.
So, but that's up to council how you want to do it. If you want to do just the online, that's great, a lot of people will be very happy with that. I think the majority of people would be.
But they could come in and we could process it online, correct?
That is a good question. If we processed it for them, I don't know if that would be a good idea for the city to take someone's card and then type it in the computer. I don't know, I don't know, that would be an attorney question, it would make me a little nervous.
Okay.
Yeah, that sounds about right.
Is there going to be some cover? As I understand this, there's not going to be a terminal here where you can walk up to the window?
That hasn't been decided yet, that's what they're kind of-
That's what we're talking about, right now.
It is an option, but they haven't decided if they want to do that or not.
Okay.
How about just getting a laptop and putting it on like a desk or something? I mean, you can pick one up for like 50, 75 bucks.
No, that would still be a city computer, and you'd still have the same problem.
But it's all secure, it's secure with internet, right?
That's not the point.
But that was the issue, was of paying through it on your guys' system, it would be-
Not that it's not secure, it's that the city can't process someone else's credit card.
But that's not what I'm saying, I'm saying have a public computer that-
Well, you can do that at the library.
I mean, they can do it too. I'm done.
Okay, I just don't think that the city can do that, can take that, unless we have our own terminal to turn on the card.
Thank you. Doesn't a terminal in the office solve that problem?
Yes, absolutely, and that's definitely an option, it's just what, if council wants to pay the 250 or 300 to do that.
There's just a one-time cost, there's no monthly?
Right, there's no monthly cost on each of these. I assume at some point you have to upgrade the equipment. I assume at some point you have to upgrade the equipment. I don't know how often you have to upgrade. If anybody here is, is a retail person and knows how often you have to upgrade that kind of stuff?
Point at her.
Oh, okay.
I apologize for being selfish with the time, but I have, uh, I've worked with the, the individuals who developed the Forte program many, many years ago in corporate America. And the reason they have the bigger cable is because then they can update via that cable, and you don't have to go in and do all that tinker-tinker business. It'll just do it by itself. Some of the verbiage might be a little, little bit of a different language to get a hold of, because they, they label things a little bit differently than some of the others. But the Forte, it has been around for a very long time. And my experience was very positive, and it was very user-friendly. And if, if the cost isn't monthly, um, my opinion, my opinion only, you know, because I have that experience with Forte, that's the direction I would lean, because they've been doing it for a long time. And the, and I think you mentioned it already, is that the structure around the Forte security mimics that of what they use in the Pentagon.
Ah, okay.
So it's extremely secure.
So it is encrypted, yes, I know.
It is very encrypted.
You don't work for Forte, do you?
You still.
They figured me out. It's kind of like took my sunglasses off with my fake mustache.
Well, the cost to the city seemed to be about the same. An ongoing though, it would save our, Forte would save everyone half a percent.
That's good. I think that savings is important to pass along.
And I think it's, it's important to be able to come into City Hall.
Have the option.
Yeah, if we're gonna do it, might as well.
Yeah.
Have the terminal there.
One thing about that is if we have that in City Hall, then people can also use this to pay for other things, other than their sewer payment. They can use it to pay for their building permits, they can use it to pay for their dog.
For all of the things.
They can use it.
Half the day.
Yeah. And the online portal, we wouldn't really have a way of doing that. It would only be sewer payments that could, that can really do the online portal, so. Having a terminal is beneficial.
Yeah.
Okay.
So that's, that's, that's the way I would go. Full terminal.
So I would be looking for a motion of which company you would like us to engage in some contract negotiations with.
Do you have a, a motion to submit?
I'll make a motion that we, uh... Straight out, Tracer. What's that? That we engage in a contract with Forte and?
Contract negotiations?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
With Forte.
Do we have a second?
I'll second that motion.
Okay, Samantha?
By Samantha. Any more council discussion?
Do you also need in the motion, or just in this discussion, that we are interested in having a terminal as well?
I don't think so. I think this is clear enough.
Okay. You sure?
I, I, no, but I, I, yes, I'm sure. I'm expecting that when the contract comes through, it will state whether we are getting a terminal or not, and whether we're getting the online portal or not. So that will come in the next step.
That will come in negotiations on the contract.
Yeah, because we'll bring the contract to you guys before it gets signed. Unless you guys wanted to say, "We trust Lois, she can sign the contract however she wants." Uh, you could say that, but I'm not saying you need to.
So, uh, the motion's been seconded by Samantha?
Yes.
And, uh, all those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And, uh, now we have public comment.
So we have one person signed up for public comment, and that is Anita Keeney. Okay, yeah, come up here. I guess we have a second person that wants to be signed up.
We might too.
So I'll add a second person after that.
I was just gonna talk about the Alliance Club. We're growing, and, um, we're, we're really outgrowing the little room at, little dining room, which makes me really sad. But, um, along with the, the fee, the waiving the fee, we don't want you to waive the fee. We're paying, we, we want to pay the fee. For, you know, using the City Hall.
Should we up the fee?
Nobody made a motion on that.
This is just public comment. Public comment. Anyway, so I just wanted to say that. And anybody's welcome to come and join. I mean, we're, we're doing great things. We have pumpkin chumkin on the 19th. Of course, nobody showed up, but a few people, and, but we had a great. We had a great time. It's gonna be even better next year.
Yeah, it will be better, yeah.
And of course, we have May Day meetings coming up, so keep looking out for that.
So we do have a second person signed up, Lynette Hoffman.
Hello.
Hello.
My name is Lynette Hoffman. I'm the editor of the Lewis County News. This is my first State or City Council meeting. Thank you. This was a great meeting. It was a business meeting, as it should be, and I want to thank you. I also want to address the community for just a moment. I am now a member of your community forum. If your goal in this community is to build your community and to keep it strong, my advice to every member in this community is to be positive about your community and your council. Those who are on social media that are negative only hurt growth. We have it. Problem in Winlock? I watch Napabine. They have no problem on their social media. They have 3 million in reserves. Toledo doesn't have much problem. I'm disgusted that I have to see, as an editor of a paper, the social media in this town and the people who are doing it. I'm angry because this town has so much potential, so much potential. Those who are on social media, I ask that you stop. If you're gonna be negative about this town, please move. They need your support, they need your help. If they are not here to support your group, we all? I have been in politics for 35 years. I've served in Washington DC, and I've served in Seattle. To see individuals act like this is really sad. So I hope, me as the editor, I will be at your next council meeting, and those who act up will be reported accordingly. Thank you.
Do we have any, uh, more public comments? Now it's only the two.
That's it, we're ready to move on.
Okay. Do we have any elected official comments? Do you guys have anything to say?
I would just say, what Lynette's comments were, was needed to happen. I really appreciate you saying that. It needed to be done.
And we will back that too.
Thank you.
We need to, the meeting is adjourned in that case. If there's nobody else that wants to say anything at 7, uh, 6:40? 40?
43.
Two.
Three. Okay. Get your gavel.
There it went.